Twenty twenty-three, three oh one P M. Item two, we will have an invocation by Councilmember Swanner. Those who are wishing to join us in prayer can do so by standing up on your territory. Councilmember?
Please join me in prayer. Dear Lord, thank you for today and thank you for us as we gather as a city. Help us to move forward and make the best decisions possible. Be with those around here that are involved with the city and with our city decisions, Lord. We ask for your guidance, each one of us and each one of us that attends this meeting. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Counsel, I'm going to ask for a motion of approval to suspend the rules on the work session agenda, to move out of order, move item eight to item number three. So I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson and second by Councilmember Swanner. All in favor of the committee by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed in the committee by saying not. We're going to consider item eight.
Mayor? Mayor, may I interrupt? I don't know if this is one of those that I'm going to need to abstain. So for the record, I'm abstaining on that discussion.
Yes, sir. So we're recognition of Councilmember Vasquez to abstain on item eight. It's moved over to item three. So this is will be discussing removing Discover Odessa from the Chamber of Commerce. We're going to open up. Councilmember Haney?
Mr. Mayor, I want to postpone this for the day and just suspend it.
Do you want to make a motion for table?
Yes, table.
So we have a motion to table item eight. Do I have a second?
A second.
Yeah. Second, I have a motion and a second. I have a motion to table the item eight to discuss removing Discover Odessa from the chamber, seconded by Councilmember Cornell. All in favor of the committee by saying aye.
Mayor, I'd like to.
Yes, if there's any discussion you wanted to address before we take a vote.
I'd like to amend his motion, if I may, to suspend this item indefinitely and bring it back at a later date.
Okay, so we have an amendment to the motion. We have to take a vote on the amendment. Councilmember Thompson has made a motion to table item eight indefinitely. Do I have a second on that item?
I'll second.
Second, so I have a motion and a second to amend the motion by Councilmember Haney, seconded by Councilmember Sir Cornell. We have to take a vote on the amendment. We have a vote, we have a motion and a second. Counsel, all in favor of the committee by saying aye on the amendment to the motion?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passing, you asked me to amend to table this indefinitely. Okay, so since the motion has been amended and tabled indefinitely, we will not move on the original motion in a second. That's correct. Since we've tabled the motion, we have people that are wanting to discuss on item eight. We have tabled the motion, so we will not be, well, we can. Do you still want to talk on the item?
I don't think you can.
But I don't think we can because we tabled the motion. So it's off the table.
It's gone.
So I just want everybody to understand that and not say that I denied anybody the opportunity to be able to speak on the item.
But, but Mayor, that is correct. Since it is now tabled, it's no longer on the agenda.
Let me put it this way. Let me tell you, all that extensive classes I took in San Antonio from nineteen ninety-five to nineteen mil and how to run this office came in handy today. So it's like, you know, when you're in school, when are you ever going to use Miss Math? Well, today it came out. Okay, we're going to move on to item three. Bright Star Memorial Plaza update.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I want to start today's update with a little bit of a recap. We have some new council members that have been seated on the council since the last time I gave an update on the Bright Star Memorial. On August thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, our city suffered an unimaginable tragedy and it hit very home, it hit very close to home, not just for the families of the victims and the survivors, but every single one of us. And we at Odessa Arts and the City of Odessa started talking about what we can do to memorialize and remember and start to heal. And so we put out a call. About a hundred and forty-two artists from across the United States applied for this commission to create a memorial for the victims of the shooting, the survivors of the shooting, and for the rest of the city to come and visit a place to grieve and heal. Jim Sanborn from Maryland won the commission and his design is a cylinder which has water jetted into it the names of all of the victims and quotes from their loved ones that are visible during the day and also at night they are illuminated by a single bulb, a bright star. It is surrounded by cement and rock benches and it's a place for people to come and heal and remember and never forget what the city went through. Once we had the design, the next question was where to put it. And that took up almost a year of talking about this. We didn't want to place it somewhere where something violent had happened. We also didn't want to place it too far from the public where they would have a difficult time getting to it. And at that point, U T P B approached us. They were beginning their campus transformation plans and they offered to house the Bright Star Memorial on campus. And that was a stroke of genius because for those of us that remember, U T P B was kind of our base of operations. That's where the first responders went, that's where the community went to go get information and assistance, and it's also where the first ceremony of healing was held. So we started working with U T P B. The city council graciously signed an M O U between Odessa Arts, the city, and U T P B in order to house the Bright Star Memorial on campus. So today, we're going to talk about the site and where we stand in terms of construction. I want to tell you now, the art piece itself is finished. It's been finished for about almost twelve months. Jim Sanborn took great care. He spent a lot of time putting it together. It's been shipped. We've inspected it. It's housed in a secure area of U T P B and it's just waiting for the landscaping. Here's a map of U T P B and in the little red square is the project site. You'll see that it's off of Loop three thirty-eight and just to the south of the sports fields. That's where U T P B's campus transformation team recommended placing the monument. And there are twofold reasons for that. There's ease of access, it's right off of Loop three thirty-eight, it already has built-in parking. But more importantly, people aren't going to stumble upon it on accident. And back in two thousand five, I went to New York City for a, for a conference and I had, I had forgotten my tie and I needed a tie. So I hopped on the subway and I went, somebody told me where to go get a tie. So I went to go get my tie, I hopped off the subway, I walked up the stairs and I was at ground zero. And I didn't know that that's where I was going to be. And it was traumatizing and upsetting to stumble upon that. And I would never want anybody else to have that kind of experience with this. I want people to be able to visit it when they want to, but they shouldn't have to see it by accident, especially the family of someone who lost a loved one. So we put it there so that you can purposefully go there, but you can't accidentally stumble upon it. And so that's, that's where that site comes in. You'll see it's accessible from the parking lot, it's also accessible from the walking trail. They will construct two new bridges over some of the drainage ditches. It's going to make it almost an island, which adds to the serene nature of the monument. It's got two walking paths, one that is ADA compatible and the other one that has stairs. You'll again make a purposeful visit and you have the time, from the time you cross that bridge to you get to the monument, to mentally and emotionally prepare for what you're going to see. And that's the landscaping that the architects have come up with to house the memorial. And I think it's absolutely gorgeous. A couple of other shots from other angles, but you see that it's risen, there's actually landfill to rise it up above the current elevation. That's going to allow the light to be seen from Loop three thirty-eight at night. You're going to be able to see that light. And that's very important, not only to Odessa Arts and U T P B, but also to the families that were involved in helping with this. So the design of the memorial and the landscaping has been done. The bid for the landscaping contract has been released. The R F Ps are due July thirteenth. By August first, U T P B will have made a decision on which firm to go with and we hope to break ground in August with a completion date of next August, which will be the five-year observance. And that's where we are today. I'm happy to entertain any questions from anyone.
I did do some reading on that. Is the U T P B, is it going to dovetail in with the university's fiftieth anniversary?
Yes, sir, it is. It's also, this is, this is going to fit in with the entire campus transformation. U T P B has made this the priority with their main entrance being second and then the rest of campus transformation after that. But I have to tip my hat for how it doesn't seem like it because we've been talking for about this for a very long time, but the speed at which U T P B has moved in order to get the landscaping design done and put it at the very forefront of their campus transformation.
Mr. Ham, you may have addressed this at the beginning of your presentation, but the funding for all of this project?
So the funding for the memorial itself came from some city funds out of the Odessa Arts budget and we raised the rest of it on our own and we paid for this through donations from community members. And I got to say, that was, the outpouring of support from the community was amazing and, and so uplifting. The landscaping and the maintenance for the landscaping, that is all U T P B's responsibility. Moving forward, once this is installed, the maintenance of the art piece itself will fall to Odessa Arts and the maintenance of the landscape and the surrounding will be U T P B's.
Great partnership.
Counsel, any other questions?
You answered all of them that I was going to ask, so.
I'm a mind reader like that.
I do have one more. Is a light bulb hard to change?
It's actually not. There's a, there's a little trap door. I actually had to crawl through it when we inspected it just to make sure that somebody could get through. But Mr. Sanborn did a really good job of not only making it very accessible, but making sure that the maintenance parts were easy to come by because we're all worried about supply chain issues even today. That's not going to be an issue with this.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Randy.
Thanks, Randy.
We're going to move on to item four, discuss economic development agreement between the Odessa Development Corporation and Border States Industries. Mr. Crowe?
Honorable Mayor, distinguished counsel, thank you for your time today. I'm coming before you because the Odessa Development Corporation is asking the council to consider an economic development agreement between the O D C and Border States Industries. Border States Industries is a company that will operate a wholesale distribution facility of electrical, construction, industrial, and utility and data communications materials and equipment inside of Ector County. The company will increase primary jobs, which satisfies the requirements of sections five oh one and five oh four of the local government code, and the company agrees to retain twenty-six full-time equivalent jobs and will add an additional seven full-time equivalent jobs during the term of the agreement, which will translate to approximately one million, six hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars in annual payroll over the next five years. The company will also make a taxable capital investment of approximately ten point five million dollars for construction of a thirty-two, I'm sorry, a thirty thousand square foot facility in Ector County. Based on this amount of taxable investment and the number of jobs and payroll during the term of the agreement, the company qualifies for a total grant in the amount of nine hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars to be paid out equally over five years if the company maintains compliance with all terms and conditions of this agreement. On June the fifteenth, the O D C board unanimously approved this agreement and we're asking council to do the same. I'll take any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
Oh, I was curious if comparability between what we do have, is this going to bring a whole nother feed of wholesale supplies to Odessa? Is this going to bring a whole new wholesale supplies or do they have competition?
Not really. I mean, they've, they've been here, they're doing an expansion and so we have other wholesalers. It's not really anything new as far as diversification, if that's what you're, what you're asking. But we are creating quite a few new jobs and we're doing a really nice taxable investment. So the city's return on investment is pretty good on this one.
Mr. Crowe, is that the wholesale electrical company that's on the corner of University of Golda?
I think that is. Yeah, I believe it is.
And will this expansion be on that same property or elsewhere?
No, sir. Let's move into.
It's on the corner of Trunkin Meadow.
Trunkin Meadow.
So they're moving.
It's an industrial district.
I'm sure they'll keep that. Okay. I just wanted to know if that was the same, one in the same.
Yes, sir. Correct question.
I do have a question on monitoring and reporting from the last, it's been a while since this has come to the council, went back to O D C. If I'm right, is this new right here? So it is on the monitoring reporting, item three, company shall submit the following document to demonstrate compliance. This is going to the appraisal district for valuations of applicable contract. Can you want to expand on that and explain that?
Well, they, every year, there will be contact about our auditing team, which as of now, we just signed a new contract with Whitley Penn. So Whitley Penn will verify the taxable investment that's been made each year as well as the number of jobs that they've maintained, as well as new hires and payroll. So as O D C always pays in arrears, they have to meet the terms of the contract to meet their annual gift, which will be a fifth of that nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Past contracts, I would go to the city attorney and then the city attorney would then deem if they needed to come back to O D C. Does that still standard operation? Or is it still going to go to O D C or is it?
The way that is now is if the auditing company sees any discrepancies, then it would go to the city attorney's office, which he would then normally send that back to compliance committee to, you know, to evaluate and then go back to the company. If there are no discrepancies in the audit finding, then it would just go typically straight to city accounting to be funded.
Okay, okay. Counsel, any other questions? All right. Mr. Crowe, anything else on this one?
Nope. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. We're going to move on to item five, discuss replacement upgrade relief network switches to, as part of the citywide infrastructure improvement project. How are you doing, sir? Just introduce yourself for the.
Mike Purse was, he had a family emergency, so I'm going to be speaking on behalf of him.
What's your name, sir?
Tony Flores.
There you go.
Sorry. Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Bernard. So the first item or item five, we want to put these on list for consent. Essentially, it's a replacement of the leaf network switches as part of the citywide infrastructure improvement project. We're upgrading various switches and hardware used to manage the network connectivity and traffic, provide increased throughput monitoring capabilities, expand monitoring capabilities, future-proof the network. This will be the first of two purchases to complete the project. Cost of this portion of the project, which includes cost of hardware and three years licensing, is priced at three hundred and two thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-five cents.
Okay, Mr. Flores, I'm going to ask this question. Let's all pretend here that everybody here on this dance in this room are I T experts and we know exactly what you're talking about. Okay? So can you break it down in a more simpler way, like two plus two is four?
Yeah, essentially, all we want to do is, so the way we use the phones, the computers, the way we talk to the internet, they go through these devices that just send packages back and forth to communicate and do all this, all this for us. They're very expensive, but they break and you need, our core switch broke, I think, like six months ago and, I mean, it really hurt. So these things are very important. So it handles all communication, it could cripple our communication, it's going to hurt any kind of, it's going to, it will affect the citizens, like when we, any, if billing collection goes down because we can't communicate to our outside services because our network isn't functioning properly, citizens can't pay their bill. So that's what we're doing. We're trying to ensure that these switches and these devices that communicate between different computers outside and inside are functioning properly. And then, of course, we have to make sure we monitor them for safety because there are bad actors trying to take our data, trying to hack the network. This is what, this is what we're trying to do. You always have to future-proof these things because they get smarter. So technology has to change and we have to change with it. So that's essentially what we're trying to do right here.
So you said that this broke down about six months ago?
It was a while back. Well, no, I'm talking about the core switch. So that's kind of what this is addressing, right? We want to make sure these things don't happen and to do that, we have to replace an aging infrastructure. So, and they did. One of our core switches went down and again, it disrupted.
Did it slow down the communication? Did you have to reroute the data in order to continue its connectivity? I mean, how, how, how do you operate it if you have one of those go down?
If a core switch goes down, we're in trouble. I mean, it, it affects, we're probably down fifty to sixty percent. If you really want to know the real technical about that, we can have James Kamer answer those questions, but.
We'll set up a meeting, we'll be here a while. The learning curve is going to be large.
Essentially, it's just, you know, it's like anything else that's set up, you're going to have something that does most of the main lifting, that's the core switch.
Okay.
And that's going to be the agenda item six that we're going to.
The replacement of the upgrade of the core network?
Correct. And they go hand in hand because you have the core network and then you have the leaf network and that, and we're trying to ensure we don't disrupt services, we don't.
So, so item five is the switches and then item six is the core?
Correct. So you'd have the core and then the switches would be connected to the core. So it would expand to the outside of our network.
So what's the, the lead time on this? How long is it going to take to get all this in?
I mean, right now, we're fine. I mean, our network's up and running, but how long would it take? How long is it going to take to replace? Six to eight months.
I was just wondering if it was like our equipment replacement is going to, at least it's six to eight months, not twenty-four to thirty. Yeah. Okay. Where's the money coming out of?
It's already budgeted, it's planned out of the, it's been already on the budget, is what Mike had told me to.
Okay. Does that, does that address both item five and six?
Yeah, they're the same, yeah.
Counsel, do we have any questions on this?
I was going to ask, you, you mentioned security, that it will improve the security. I was seeing that also it should prevent network loops and also improve scalability just as well.
Correct.
Okay. S T P is no longer needed?
Sorry?
S T P is no longer needed?
S T P.
That'd be spanning tree protocol?
I don't know.
Those technical questions, I can, I can answer those. So the spanning tree protocol is deleted, that's what keeps.
You got to come up here and talk with it, yeah. Because what's going to happen is that nobody's going to be picking up at there and we're going to get a complaint.
That's fine. So, so the protocols that are used for the networking are still in place. The newer firmware that's on these switches.
James, introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm so sorry. So, yeah, everyone knows, I'm sorry. Okay. James Kamer, infrastructure supervisor at City of Odessa. So those, those technical questions, I can answer. The switches are needed to improve the throughput and the reliability of, like I told you in the network. There's also certain protocols in there, the spanning tree protocol, that way we can interconnect switches with multiple other sites and if a switch does go down, then there's automatic routing can take place of, of that network. Where we're at right now, we're in what's considered a wheel and spoke. So we have a central core with switches that are outside from there. With the newer switches, we'd be able to interconnect and have redundancy with what's going on. And then back to the core switch.
That's what it's going to hit on is redundancy.
Yeah, redundancy. Back to the core switch, it was here at City Hall, that was our primary internet output. Once that died, I think it was like three o'clock in the morning, I was here for twelve hours, trying to reroute everything, physically plug stuff in, and it was an outdated piece of equipment and it failed. So hopefully with the equipment that we're asking for and the funds we're asking for for this equipment, it should put us forward seven to ten years.
It looks really good. I was looking at it, yes.
I could talk all day about the switches if you want.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I can set up a meeting on that. All right. I guess that's all the questions we have. Thank you, thank you.
Are you going to go to number six?
Well, he already answered everything we, yeah. So that's why I said, does this cover both five and six? So killing two, two birds with one stone. We're going to move on to item seven, discuss asbestos abatement for the old fire station six. I see.
Mayor, council. So this item is to discuss the asbestos abatement for old fire station six. The abatement cost for the station six is going to be three hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents, forty-six cents. So this is a discussion that we've had concerning a possible lease of the building, but we discovered that it had asbestos. We had it tested and had a consultant go out there and this is what the cost is. Now, the, the question for you all is, what is the best remedy for this building? Do we pursue with cleaning it up? Do we continue with the lease? Do we sell it? This is your question.
Sell it.
That's expensive. We wind up having asbestos in the mastic on the front dispatch office, that's four hundred square feet, and it's in the glue and down on the carpet in the dorm rooms, living area. That's roughly about fifty, fifty-eight hundred square feet. I suggest just sell it.
I suggest sell it.
As is.
As is where is.
As is. So what would that process would be? Would we, have we already approved that process that we can?
Mayor, we have and I believe Joanne is here and she can, well, we can't get off on that subject, but, but we do have one that has come back, a real estate agent that has come back, and I think we're going to put it on, on the eleventh to accept it or?
I have to go to work session?
Yeah, on the eleventh. Yeah, to accept, yeah.
Can we just go straight to the council agenda?
Yeah, we can, we can go straight to the council agenda for the eleventh.
Yeah, skip the work session, go straight to agenda.
And then we can.
Delay this, that way we can.
We can go from there.
Maybe, maybe I misunderstood. So there's already been a bid on purchasing the building?
No, sir, no, sir. So what we have done is here, I guess probably about a month ago, month and a half ago, y'all had R F Ps sent out, which is asking for a real estate agent to come forward and say, okay, will you charge us five percent, we charge us three percent to sell city-owned property? That's one of three ways that we can sell property. The other two, of course, public auction, sale, bid. But it's much easier having a real estate agent do it because a real estate agent already has an appraiser that they can come and get, have appraised because we have to get fair market value for all of our property. We can't just give it away.
Thank you, Frank.
So it's, it's easier in my mind having a real estate agent handle it.
Yes, sir.
Pass it along to them and let them handle it.
And this was anticipation that we were going to, which we anticipated about, about this. So we got the building, Mr. Anderson decided, I know his preference, what we need to do with this. I'm not calling you up, you're good. And so, so now that we are sure what the dollar amount is to abate it
Right.
and the cost, the, the cost of abating it outweighs the value of the property. So if we can find a buyer, it's unnoted. But, yes.
My only comment is be sure and check. I just want to make sure and check.
Mineral values.
Mineral values underneath because we're discovering, we've got some in the city. We've got some.
Yes.
And we're working on that.
So any property that we wanted to pass it up.
We're going, we're going to retain the minerals.
Yes. We're not letting those go. All right. Any question, any further questions?
I have just one. The Peace Academy, where are we with them? Did they withdraw their interest in the property for renting?
We are, we are not going to give them to a lease agreement.
Okay.
And so this is why we have this assessment. So if anybody is willing to purchase and take this on as liability, then they're more than happy to do it. Okay? Any other further questions? Okay, we're going to move on to item nine, discuss setting up a five oh one C three organization or a foundation to accept monies on behalf of sports conference. City Attorney?
Mayor, council, so this is pretty exciting for all of us. There are several steps, hoops that we're going to have to jump through. The first thing that I'm looking for y'all to do is basically give me a directive to go out and start working, setting this up. But I'm also going to ask you to be thinking about who your directors are going to But I'm also going to ask you to be thinking about who your directors are going to be for this sports foundation, sports complex. That's the first thing. The second thing we need to think about is, what are you going to name it? Is it going to be the Odessa Sports Complex Foundation? Is it going to be such and such corporation? What are you going to name it? So what I would, what I would ask you to do is be thinking who your directors are going to be, and then when we come back July the 11th, I'd like to put it on there and have y'all name your directors. I would, I would start off with one each, so you would have seven, a total of seven. And then we will work ourselves on down to doing a registered agent and then actually filing the Texas nonprofit certificate of formation, and then we will work on having the bylaws, and then we will work on having the board of directors actually meet. So those two things are the first things I want y'all to do, and I need y'all to be kind of prepared for July the 11th. Who are you, so again, choose your directors for the nonprofit, and you got to think of a name for the nonprofit.
Mr. Jones, how long would the process take to get this 501(c)?
It won't take, but once we get the board of directors and everything, we can have it done in a couple of weeks.
Very good.
Counsel, any other questions?
I'm just, I'm reading, reading Mark Tealeve's, that we're starting, we're starting to get money in, we want to be able to. And that's, some of the other things that I've, LLCs that I've set up in the past, they're pretty quickly. But what, for us, though, we need to have the directors named, and we need to have what the actual nonprofit's going to be called. And we'll shoot for that July the 11th, and then once we do that, then we, in fact, I'm already working on the bylaws and everything, and we're, all of that's being worked on. But it's these two things I need from y'all that I can't, that y'all can't tell me today because it's not on the agenda.
Very good. Okay. Everybody has their homework? Any other questions?
I have one for Mr. Jones. That the 501(c)(3) allows the donors to write off that. Yes, it's tax exempt. The 501(c) alone would not. That's correct. Good choice. That's right. So it's going to be tax exempt, so let's say a company or a corporation comes in, and then they'll be able to get it off on their taxes, so, and individuals will as well. I feel like a pitch man up here for a little bit. Everyone, open your pocketbooks. But anyway, so that's what we can do, though. But yes, sir. I just, I just want us to be ready to go on July the 11th, so, because by then, I'm going to have a good outline of the bylaws, what we're going to do, and I just want y'all to have, everyone of y'all to have an appointment, and then y'all probably need to decide what you're going to name it. And we still got to accept the land from Mr. Bell.
We're going to have that on.
It's on the web.
Yeah. He just called me and asked me that. Yeah. So we still have to do all that, but we're going to make it happen.
All right. Any other discussion, direction, clarity? Seeing that there is no more business before the city council in this city work session, I'll accept a motion to adjourn by Councilmember Swannar, second by Councilmember Vasquez, all in favor indicating but saying not. All opposing, indicating but saying nay. Motion passed, unanimous, we are adjourned.
Wow. Tonight's going to be even longer. Yeah. Somebody just.